All right, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May 11th of 2021. This is the Stoughton City Council. And we'll start out with the roll call.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Eily.
Yeah.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Gacki.
Here.
Miaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Zakowski.
Here.
Nagus.
Here.
There are twelve Alders.
All right, thank you Holly. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Public comment, nobody has signed up to speak tonight. So that'll take us to communications and presentations. And before we start, I do have a few communications here. I just want to start out by saying, in the last two months, in the last month, we lost two members of the city of Stoughton family. Chris Johnson and Brian Shield. Chris loved to volunteer for the city of Stoughton, especially interacting with customers and colleagues. And he'll be greatly missed in the community. Brian worked at Stoughton Utilities for over twenty years and trained twelve apprentices. Condolences go out to his family Dana, Brooke, Sydney, Marilyn, and his brother Rodney, and his many other families and friends. We do have some proclamations tonight. So let me put them up for you.
I apologize for the dog.
Mute.
I don't know if the dog's trained to do that.
Yeah, it would be a good trick.
So we do have several proclamations, and really I just want to acknowledge some of them, and then I'll read the one. First of all, you know what time it is? It's set into my time. That'll be this weekend. A full schedule can be found on the Chamber's website. Some of the program was pre-recorded, including the proclamation. So you'll be able to stream part of the set of my festivities online. And then some of the impersonate events will still occur. So for the full schedule, once again, you can go to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce website. We want to celebrate some things that go on in May. National Public Works Week is actually next week, and we wanted to acknowledge all of our employees that are Public Works. That are out there day in and day out, working on our parks, our roads. We also want to acknowledge, last week was Professional Municipal Clerk Week. So we wanted to make sure that we recognize Holly and her team and her peers for all the work they did. The last year has been particularly challenging with COVID and numerous elections and all the changes and that seem to be occurring daily. The clerks also do our record keeping and licensing, as well as we'll be preparing here for the census, once the data reaches us. And then also National Police Week. And I know other person Jensen had some words he wanted to say regarding that. So go ahead Greg.
Thank you. I've been the chair, been fortunate enough to be the chair of the Public Safety Committee for past three years now, I believe. Maybe longer, I don't know, I forget. But anyways, I just wanted to thank Chief Leck, his sworn officers, and his civilian employees. They are an extremely professional unit. And it's one that the city of Stoughton could be very proud of. And I just want to congratulate them and say thank you very much on behalf of myself and for all the rest of my family.
Thank you, other person Jensen. And then one proclamation I wanted to read, and this is the City of Stoughton Mental Health Month proclamation. And it reads as, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing. And whereas in 2019, almost half of Stoughton High School students reported experiencing significant problems within the last twelve months due to anxiety or prolonged sadness. Whereas in 2019, over a quarter of Stoughton High School students report feelings of sad or hopeless almost every day of the week for two weeks or more in a row within the last twelve months, that they stopped doing some of their usual activities. And whereas in 2019, half of the Stoughton High School students report rarely or never getting the emotional help they need. And whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there are practical tools that people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has responsibilities to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Therefore, I mayor do hereby proclaim May 2021 is Mental Health Month in the city of Stoughton. And I call on citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Stoughton to commit to our community in increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need and appropriate accessible services for all the people with mental health conditions. Thank you very much. Those are the proclamations I had. Are there any communications from any council members tonight?
I do mayor.
Go ahead.
Somewhat related, trying to help keep things afloat and keep resolve and keep strong. We will be getting the American Recovery Plan funding from our government. And local monies will come. And we're starting to talk about how we're going to try to effectively use that money. And I'm just encouraging residents of Stoughton, ones that might be online, or maybe we'll put a simple social media message out that lets people know that if they feel they want to get across how they've been impacted by COVID to help make us aware, so that we make good decisions. I encourage people to reach out to Alders if they have questions about that funding that may be coming. And want us to understand what's going on with that. So just want to encourage that.
All right, thank you. Any other communications from council members tonight? All right, hearing none. We were gonna do a presentation from Attorney Dragney tonight, but I think we'll push that to another meeting. And then we can send out the documents that go with it. Consent agenda consists of two items. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sure, second. There's a motion and a second. Would anybody like anything acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. All right, the next item is coming from Finance Committee. Other person Schumacher, would you like to introduce this one?
Sure, hold on just one second. All right.
It's R sixty-five.
Yep, so Resolution R sixty-five, twenty twenty-one, the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $2.35 million. General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2021A, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you like to walk through this one, or?
Let's see, if Dave is on or Jayman is on, I think they would be able to get the details on this. Particularly, this is to take care of CIP budgeting for construction projects and such, set up similar to the way that we had done them last year. But let them fill in on the greater details of this.
Sure. Jayman, were you gonna have me share my screen?
Yeah, if you're gonna go through a little bit of the presentation, Holly, can you turn the screen over to Dave? He can walk through the details of the parameter sale. Okay. So went through this in quite a bit of detail at finance. I can go into more detail, but I'll try to keep it a little higher level here. This is your financing for your 2021 projects that we not only, that you approved during the fall in the budget, but we also did some presentations with Financial Management Plan. So this is kind of a continuation of that, but actually financing those projects. The, really, the key points on this one is that we do have a call date out in the future that if it makes good sense to refund, the city could potentially refund them. And basically in this market, you're probably not going to refund anything, but if you have cash on hand, that would give you an opportunity to pay those off earlier. We do have a rating call set up with Moody's, and so the mayor and your financial director will give a nice presentation on what's going on in the city. Tell them all the great things that are occurring development-wise, the financial health, and hopefully we'll end up with a double A two once again, which is a really good rating for the city. And I don't really see anything in your financials that would preclude you from getting that. We're gonna do this competitively like we did in the past. That means that you'll be getting bids from national, regional, and local, including Bankers Bank, which sometimes pulls in the local bank. So if that's, if that's a possibility, that we may get a bid that has the local bank in it. The one thing that Brett did, or Alderman Schumacher did talk about earlier is the parameters. We did do this last year, and most of the reason that, some of the reason that we did this last year is because COVID had driven the market crazy for interest rates. And I do have a graph at the back that kind of shows you that period of time where everything was kind of, almost like a erratic heartbeat. So we, what we do with this, even though we don't foresee anything really out there that's gonna cause any issues, is this gives us a little flexibility on sale date. It keeps the underwriters in these parameters amounts that we don't get any kind of a wild bid that gives us troubles with like having too much premium thrown at it. So really, it says Finance Director, City Clerk, but really, to, what this resolution does is it allows you to delegate the approving of the sale to the mayor and the Finance Director Controller. And so the resolution that's before you tonight delegates that responsibility, which in the past, prior to this last year, would be us showing up to the meeting to go through how the sale went. So the sale document will still come out. It'll still be dispersed to you. If you decide you want me to go through it, I could definitely be on a meeting if you want that. But really, all it does is it gives us flexibility and potentially gives us more bidders just because we're doing it on a day that's more like a Wednesday, Thursday, and a lot of municipalities in Wisconsin sell on Monday, Tuesdays, because that's when their meetings are. So this gives us flexibility. Otherwise, just keep it a little higher level here. The sale calendar, really, we're here to ask you to approve those parameters. The parameter resolution, we'll do the rating call and another call to review the official statement, which is what the underwriters used to bid on your notes. And then on June 2nd, if you approve the parameter resolution, either the mayor or the Director of Finance would sign off on that. And then the money would come in on June 23rd, the closing date, and you could start paying for your projects. So really, just not to really go into too much detail in numbers, but I think the important thing that we have to talk about on this schedule, which is your, basically how we solve for the tax rate, which is this column that I'm kind of going up and down here. When we presented this a few months ago for the Financial Management Plan, we were up about $2.99 of equalized value rate per thousand of equalized value. And as you know, we did the amendment to Tiff five, or Tiff four to share with Tiff five and Tiff eight. That eliminated a bunch of tax levy support that was driving that rate up. And so we're happy to say that, you know, we're able to demonstrate what a good decision was and what it has done to your tax rate. So we have the overall payment schedule here. We have it broken out by the regular city levy projects and the stormwater. And then, you know, a little bit of debt capacity, which your policy is eighty percent, you can see you have quite a bit. And then this is the rate, so this was your COVID period I was talking about last year. And when I was presenting to you last year, we were kind of talking about that being one of the reasons you might do parameters, but the other reason is, as I said, flexibility if something does happen and provide the possibility of more bidders. That's all I have unless anybody wants me to get into more detail. Or explain something further.
Let me.
Any questions or comments at this point? All right, did we have a motion Holly?
Yes.
Okay. So hearing no comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion does carry. All right, thank you. Next item is R sixty-six of 2021. This one comes from Public Safety. Holly, I don't know if you can get the screen back to me. All right.
I've got it up here, Mayor, so.
All right, go ahead Greg.
Yeah, that's Resolution sixty-six, twenty twenty-one, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine retail license for special event license to the Taste of Stoughton, and I would move for approval.
Sure, a second.
Second.
All right, there's a second. All the person Jensen.
Yes, Public Safety met on April twenty-eighth and recommended on a seven-zero vote to approve the licensing for Taste of Stoughton. This, they had this all set up last year, then of course COVID really threw a curveball at them, and they ended up having to cancel. So they're gonna try it, they're gonna try it again this year. It's gonna be all out at Norse Park. They have, there's the COVID safety issues. I think they have that very well set up. And I'm hoping that it's a very successful event.
All right, thank you. And I think Crystal Welsh is on the call. Anything you want to add, Crystal?
Hi, nothing in particular that I want to add. I welcome questions. We are working with Stoughton Hospital. We will be following Aldean County guidelines. And we have a bunch of restaurants that are so eager to do this. So we need the community support for you guys to just show up and have fun.
All right.
I have a question, one.
Sure, President Hirsch, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I guess I'm channeling my inner Sid and was wondering if there's been criteria followed with respect to making sure that people underage don't have access to the beer and wine and that how are you gonna handle that to make sure that people are carded and it's a safe event for everybody?
Absolutely. So we are also working with the Coalition Team, the Wellness Coalition Team, and they're providing ID checks. And we will be having wristbands for everyone after they get their ID check. There's one entrance and one exit for the public, and that's right by our, you can see where it says Ticket Stand ID Check. That's where people will be coming in and out. So we'll, we'll have watch on them, but yeah, wristbands and ID checkers will.
Thank you so much.
If I could add to that, to the following best practices as well.
Is it possible the next time we have this to actually have that information in the packet? So we can see you're actually following?
I am surprised that it's not there. That's a good idea. Thank you. We'll make sure that that happens.
Thanks. Then I would just add one correction of, so not, this event won't be held at Norse Park, but at Nordic Ridge Park, correct?
Excuse me, yes, thank you.
No worries. On June nineteenth, if everyone's interested. I guess we have too many Norwegian name parks around here that it's hard to get them straight.
Never, never too many Norwegian, no, no, no.
All right, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thanks for being here, Crystal. The next item is Ordinance twelve of 2021, and this is a first reading. And this last went through the Public Safety Committee. Other person Jensen.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Swadley. Ordinance twelve, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance allowing for sidewalk cafe in the city of Stoughton. It was recommended to the council by a seven-zero vote on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and this is a first reading. If there is a consensus to do so, I think, you know, to expedite this, we could waive the rule. But I don't know if it's, if the council feels that there's, if it's important enough to get that done. So we can, so our, you know, our businesses downtown can take advantage of this.
I would move to waive the rules.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, and I think we need a two-thirds majority. All in favor of weaving the rules, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? Just. So that'll take us to the ordinance and all the person Jensen.
Yeah, thank you for that. Again, this was something that came through our committee. I think it was well thought out. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look through it. And we can extend the temporary diming outside to make it permanent. So I'm hoping that this works well. True. If there's any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Looking at the very last page under revocation or suspension. I, I think that we should have a set procedure for revocation. It says right now, the city council or the Public Safety Committee may revoke. I think if it's a single bottom line to it, it feels more like like a decision that is real and that has, you know, no one feels. I guess it reduces the amount of perceived unfairness that could come out of it if it came to a revocation.
Would you, if I could, would you feel better if it was, if it went through committee and then to council rather than either?
I am kind of agnostic about whether it's the committee or the council that has the final decision. But I have a proposed amendment to get discussion started on this. So the amendment would be to replace the start of that sentence, the city council or Public Safety Committee with, at the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, the city council may revoke.
That makes sense. Yeah, that's fine.
So I will move to make that.
Can you repeat that Ben?
Sorry?
Can you repeat that?
At the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, the city council may revoke. And then the sentence continues as it is.
All right.
This is Matt. Can I, can I just offer a, can I just comment on that briefly?
Yeah, so we have a motion. Did we have a second, or do you want to wait for the second, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wait for the second.
I'll second.
All right, take your pick Holly. Go ahead, Matt.
This may be clear to everyone. I just want to make sure everyone understands the effect of the amendment. If it's adopted, as I understand it, would be to mean that the council could only revoke a license if such revocation were recommended by the committee. And that if that's the intent, that's fine. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that.
That was my intent, yes.
Okay. So then, under the language, the police chief could suspend them. But if it was gonna be revoked, it would have to go through Public Safety and the council.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any questions or comments on the amendment from anyone?
As chair, I have no problem with that.
I think it's a good route. I'd rather have the committee doing the legwork rather than having to deliberate it in council.
Yeah, I guess the only concern I would have is, is if they're suspended, it might take longer to ultimately get a decision. But, you know, I guess that's just part of the deal. You know, they might have to wait an extra two weeks or three weeks until the council meets again after the committee.
We can always have a special meeting. I mean, if it's something that's really important and it's a public safety issue, we can always call a special meeting to.
So I'll just, the reason that I raised the issue that I did is that typically our committees are advisory to the council. And here, even if there was a majority on the council that wanted to revoke, if the committee, if you didn't have a majority on the committee that was willing to do that, the council would not be able to do that. And so that is, it's a, it's a atypical structure. Again, if you want to do that, that's your prerogative. But, well, of course, you can always change the ordinance later if you don't like how that's working.
Well, Matt, because right now, it says, with that in mind, it says the Public Safety Committee may revoke. So that, right now, the way it reads, they have the authority to revoke, which means that they're no longer advisory. They're actually taking action. And I think that's what, if I'm not speaking for you, Ben, and I agree with him. I think the committee has to be advisory. And if you have a better way to word it, that it goes to public safety. And regardless, it comes to the city council, regardless of what, you know, the Public Safety Committee actually votes on. I mean, if they say no.
So I guess my question is.
Like any other thing, it's just advisory, right?
Not the way the. Not the way the, the, the way the amendment is worded, as I understand it, the council would be bound by the recommendation, by the decision of the committee. So in other words, if the committee was unwilling to, well, if the committee votes against revocation, the council could not, could not revoke.
Oh, I guess that's not what I had heard Ben say. So maybe we need to change that.
Can you change, can you change the wording to say that the committee reviews with, with recommendation to council?
Could, could I hear the language of the amendment one more time, please? Holly?
So the language of the amendment would be that sentence that starts with the city council or Public Safety Committee may revoke would be to change that to at the recommendation of a Public Safety Committee, the city council may revoke a sidewalk cafe license. And then it finishes out.
So I would change, if, if that, if the intent is to make the committees, committee advisory, instead of saying at the recommendation of, I would say after consideration of the, after consideration of a, of the committee's recommendation, the council may revoke.
I'm fine with that language. However, we want to do that procedurally. Should we just have a vote on the current amendment? And then if the
Okay.
If the majority thinks the other language is best, we go with that? Or we, we do a second amendment?
Well, if you want to do it the easy way, which may not be technically correct, if Ben and the person who seconded it are okay with the alternative language, and there's no objection to that, you could, you could simply replace the language that was offered originally with this new language.
Matt, could you repeat the language that you offered?
Yes. Following consideration of the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, the common council may revoke.
I'll accept that language.
If I were the second on it, then I would also accept that new wording.
All right.
I don't remember if it was Joyce or I who got it.
I accept that if it were me, so.
All right. So we'll go with that. Roberts rules might not like it, but that's okay. We all know what we, what our intentions are here. Is there any discussion on the new language? All right. Here are none. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed to the language? Okay, that motion carries. So now we have the original ordinance with the amendment. Any discussion on that?
I had a question. Under the definitions in the subsection, a sidewalk cafe is an outdoor dining area located in any public sidewalk, et cetera. And I just wanted to be sure, because currently, I know there's at least two establishments that are taking advantage of the outside seating that I guess I wouldn't consider them dining because they don't serve food. So I just want to make sure they're not excluded. And I don't know if the intent was to exclude them or if, if I'm misunderstanding the definition. It's under A.
Holly, can you put that up?
Yeah, I couldn't find it. I think we did address this, Chief. Remember that conversation?
It's on page two, I believe, in the definitions, definition A. There we go.
Yeah, actually, we did raise that concern at Public Safety. And we checked with zoning administrator, Mike Stacy, that those other businesses that aren't cafes are falling under this section of the ordinance still fall under zoning, which would have control over those other businesses and the ability to remove problem seating areas or whatever it may be, or to, in the context of a special event with, through the zoning, they'd have authority to say you can't have anything out there during sit and mi, for example.
But if they're, oh, just to be sure I understand. So they would still, if they follow the, the parameters, they would still qualify to continue with their sidewalk cafes, so to speak, as long as it's, they're meeting the, the ordinances. Am I understanding that correctly then?
Yeah, it would be under the other.
Okay.
I don't think I understand the question. So.
Well, it, it says in the subsection, a sidewalk cafe is an outdoor dining area. And to me, that means eating. And I know we have at least two establishments that don't provide food. I just wanted to make sure they're not going to get left out of this, you know, so that they can continue serving their alcoholic or other beverages outside, even though they don't have food.
Could this be simplified by expanding dining area to beverage and/or food area?
Well, let me ask this. Was, was the committee's intent to allow this kind of an area to be used only for the consumption of beverages? Or was the intent that there would have to be food service? I don't, I don't know.
My recollection of our committee meetings is that it evolved a little bit over time. We did not mean when we put the first emergency order in to be exclusionary of the bars that only served alcohol. We were just trying to get people outside, but yet safely with parameters, sitting within the confines of. And so then we made an emergency, we added to the emergency with language that would allow those other businesses to serve outside as long as they were within the parameters that we had set up. I agree with, with Lisa that I am not certain that, that this covers them based upon how you read that. And perhaps we should add language that says dining and/or beverage.
So you're talking about the alcohol?
Yeah.
So I think I have that on the screen now, which is covered in section D, item seven. So I think we're covered there.
That's right. But, but agreed, we're covered with seven. But our language there that says dining only is a little.
Well, to, to. Yeah, I think back to that original, the definition of outdoor cafe, back to A, to address the concern that's been raised, perhaps it ought to be amended to say, is it, is an outdoor area for dining, comma, drinking, or both located in any public sidewalk, et cetera?
I would make a motion to make that language change.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Did you catch that language, Holly?
Yes, I think it should, the motion was to change it to say outdoor dining, comma, drinking, or both area.
Yes. Yeah, should say it is, a sidewalk cafe is an outdoor area for dining, comma, drinking, or both, comma, located in any public sidewalk or right of way, et cetera.
All right. And any questions or comments? All right. Here are none. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Are there any other amendments?
I had a further question on the alcohol under standards and requirements, number nine, alcohol may be served only in single serving containers. I know in some places the requirement is, say, a can or a bottle. Does this, is the intent of the committee to have beverages poured into a glass included under this? And if so, is the language appropriate for that? Or should we be more specific?
Well, this is Matt. I think the intent is to, a bottle or a can would be a single serving container. I think the intent is to avoid, say, pitchers that, so, but I'll let the committee, I might be wrong about that.
No, I think that.
Yeah. And I, the way I read it was a couple of the establishments, you can carry out multiple, you know, maybe a six pack or something to take at home. And I, I read that, that you, you can't purchase a six pack and sit at the table with it.
Right.
Okay, that's fair to me. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the language.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments or amendments?
I, I actually have one, one, one point of question in regarding the allowable hours being 11, eight, 8:00 AM to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 10:00 all other days. Curious how those hours were achieved, how those came to be in here, or what discussion led to those hours.
I believe that might be consistent with what we had for, for like the outdoor patios. But I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't know if that was carryover from our previous. I'm just reflecting on this. I'm kind of like, hmm.
I think.
To 11:00 PM. Sorry?
I think it came from our, you know, like the patio policy that we had, patio ordinance.
Okay.
But we can certainly monitor if it becomes problematic. We can bring it, that part back if you're concerned about that.
I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the, especially the 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, potentially, you know, making this permanent and that potentially being a nuisance, I guess, depending on the circumstance. But since the establishments we're talking about are all, you know, at ground level of residential, residential units on Main Street, pretty much for the most part, that that could present a nuisance situation, but.
Here's, here's, if I could, I'm sorry, to just try and get this conversation going in the right direction here. This, this is just a start. We needed to go, we needed to have someplace to start with to see what, 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 where we, we needed to go. So it's, it's not written in stone. I mean, we can, we can certainly change this as we see a need to change this. But the police had to have something that they could go with. And so that's where we came up with this. And I think the chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but you, we, we looked at other cities as well on, you know, to see what they had. There, there wasn't a whole heck of a lot out there. But this, this was the best that we could come up with. And, you know, like I say, in six months, if we need to make an adjustment, we can make an adjustment. If it, if it doesn't work at all, we can remove it. But, but we needed to have someplace to start with. And that's what this is.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I, yeah, I, I probably would have been just okay with saying eight to a 10, you know, eight to 10 all days of the week. But yeah, we'll see where, we'll see where it goes.
All right. Are there any other amendments anyone would like to make? Otherwise, we have the original motion. I think it was amended twice. Last call for questions or comments. No pun intended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion does carry. I'm gonna jump back. Attorney Dragney was gonna do a presentation. He's having trouble logging in, but he says he's ready. He said it would be brief. But we just wanted to cover some basic items. And I know there was also some conversation, Matt, about whether it would be appropriate to either share or cover some of these items for our standing committees where we have community members on them. So if you have any thoughts about that, you could let us know how you think we should address that as well.
Are you, are you ready? Are you ready, Mayor?
Yeah. Do you want the screen?
No, I guess I would ask Holly if she could. I can't share the screen, share it on the screen because I'm on my iPad, not my computer. Maybe Holly could put up the outline and kind of try and follow along. So I'm going to kind of let you guys be my guide as to how deep you want to get into the materials here. Feel free. If you have questions, you want to dig a little more deeply into any of these items, just let me know and we can stop and we can talk about whatever you'd like to talk about. Most of, most of what I'm going to speak about tonight is going to be the open meetings law. We can talk about ethics as well. I don't think I'll spend much time on public records. Because frankly, the members of the council don't generally directly need to deal with public records. But I'll, I'll say a couple things about them. So we'll start with a discussion of the open meetings law. As a general matter, the open meetings law requires that all meetings of all local governmental bodies must be preceded by public notice, and they must be publicly held in places reasonably accessible to the public and open to all citizens at all times, unless there's an express provision in the law that allows otherwise. That's the basic legal requirement. Then we get into the more detailed questions, first being, you know, what, what is a governmental body that is subject to this requirement? So the, any, of course, the city council is governing a governmental body, but any city committee, any city commission or board that operates in the city is a governmental body, subject to this requirement. The more difficult problem is knowing whether a gathering of individuals constitutes a meeting under the law. So we'll talk a little bit about what, what guidance we have about what a, what is a meeting. I'm going to start with the two-part test that I think is the most critical to understand. One part of the test is the gathering of individuals is for the purpose of discussing, or deciding, or gathering information about governmental business. So that's the, the purpose part of the test. And it's not simply, you know, the purpose test can be satisfied not only when you are together in a setting like this, discussing governmental business. But there are cases where a group will choose, for example, to visit a site to gather information, to meet with another organization. And those kinds of meetings, if, if the purpose is related to city business in some way, the purpose test will be satisfied. The, the second part of this two-part test is the numbers test. And the numbers test asks whether And the numbers test asks whether the the number of members who are participating is sufficient to determine the course of action that would be taken by the governmental body in question. And this can be a sufficient number of members to actually pass something, but also a sufficient number of members to defeat a proposal. And so this can get a little complicated. So in Stoughton, for example, eight members constitute a quorum. And so it would be possible for four members of the council, if only eight members are present, to actually prevent passage of a measure. So I don't think that you have to assume that eight members are are going to be, you know, that you're only gonna have a quorum at a meeting when you're trying to do the numbers test. But I want you to be mindful that the numbers test can be a little tricky. It's not simply, oh, do we have a majority of the council present? It can be significantly less than a majority of the council or a majority of the other body that we're talking about, depending on the circumstances. So let me stop, any questions so far? Okay, hearing none? We'll talk about some kind of special circumstances in this context. One is the concept of a walking quorum. A walking quorum is a meeting that occurs when there are a series of individual meetings or gatherings or communications that collectively would meet the numbers and purpose test that we just talked about. So if, if you have a series of discussions among members of a committee or other governing body that are involved, discussion of the, of, of the issue, and those members are in some way collaborating to act together on a matter, you would have a walking quorum that would violate the open meetings law. The next example I'd like to give is this, the watering hole meeting. So that, that occurs when you have a sufficient number of members of a governmental body that gather other than a regular meeting to discuss governmental business. The typical example might be agreeing to meet at a coffee shop, or maybe you go to, you know, the tavern after a meeting because, you know, you've got some time and you want to get together. You can do that as long as you're not discussing governmental business. I think it's awfully hard to go to, to, to meet together immediately after a meeting governmental body and avoid discussing a governmental business, but it's theoretically possible, but this is where I'm gonna get back, I'm gonna go back to the beginning of this section, where it talks about what is a meeting? And the concept that a meeting is actually presumed under the law if you have one half or more of the members of the body present. It's, it's actually not, it's a rebuttably presumed to be a meeting under the law. So anytime you have one half or more of the members of a committee or governmental body, even if you're not actually meeting for governmental business, there's a legal presumption that it's a meeting. And if there were ever a question, a legal chat, or, or a legal case involving whether that was a violation or not, the burden would be on the people who were participating to, to demonstrate that they were not, in fact, is conducting governmental business. Okay, let's go down to the community organization meeting. I'm seeing a lot of this, I'm seeing there are interest groups that are working on issues that are of public concern and public interest. And, and I'm seeing in some cases that members of either the governing body, you know, the governing body or committees that are interested in those issues are attending those meetings. And so you have examples in, in the city of Stoughton of organizations that are working on issues of concern to the community. If you are going to have a situation where you meet the numbers test, got a sufficient number of members of a governing body, of a body, and the purpose is to discuss an issue that is before the city, or maybe before the city, and to discuss this, how the city ought to handle it, that needs to be noticed as a meeting of that body. I had in another community a situation where there were, we had a three-member public safety committee, and two of the members of that committee were attending a community organizations meetings, and those meetings involve discussions of matters that were of interest to the public safety committee. And so my advice was even though that's a meeting of this other organization, if you're gonna have two of the three members of the public safety committee attending, that needs to be noticed as a public safety committee meeting, has to be open to the public, has to be conducted in accordance with the open meetings law. Next, written correspondence and email. Here, I rely heavily on guidance from the Attorney General. Attorney General has advised that a, say, a hard copy letter that is sent in the mail, for example, so let's say somebody on the council sends a letter to everyone else on the council, and it's a one-way flow of information. That's probably not a meeting. Even if it involves you know, a discussion of an issue that is relevant to city business, that's unlikely to be considered a meeting. Email is considered to be more problematic, mainly because it is so easy when you use email for the communication to grow beyond just a one-way communication and evolve into something that looks much more like a conversation among members. And so the caution from the Attorney General is that well, the Attorney General's office strongly discourages the members of governmental bodies from using electronic mail to communicate about issues within the body's realm of authority. I know it's very difficult in this day and age because frankly, we all use email and we don't send letters much anymore. But that is the guidance from the Attorney General's office. Finally, it's important to know that social gatherings that are not intended to avoid the open meetings law, they're not subject to the open meetings law, but be aware, if you have a majority of the members present, you do have that rebuttable presumption that it's a, it's a meeting. I'm not gonna speak much about notice because your clerk takes care of notice. Closed session, I'll just briefly mention a few things. Council cannot meet, a body cannot meet in closed session unless there is a specific statutory authority to do that. And if there is an anticipation or an expectation before a meeting that there will be a closed session, then the notice of that meeting has to give notice that the body may meet in closed session. It is allowable to meet in closed sessions spontaneously, even if no notice had been given ahead of time, as long as there's a legal basis to do so. But as a general rule, if you do that, you can't reconvene in open session and take action. You, you have to, that, that's the last thing you could do in that meeting if it hasn't been given notice ahead of time. Finally, there are often questions about voting in open session. And the guidance from the Attorney General's office is that generally the body should vote in open session unless the vote is itself clearly an integral part of what is authorized in closed session. So in other words, if you need to vote in closed session as part of the process that you're statutorily allowed to do in closed session, then that, that can be allowed. There's a lot more information about these issues available with the materials that have been provided. And, you know, I'm available and Holly is available as a resource if you have questions. Let me stop. Any, any, anything anyone wants to ask about open meetings law? Okay. Oh, I think I heard something.
Yeah, Rachel, I have a question. Are there recommendations or best practices for how to move things forward or best practices that other cities use to comply with open meetings law, but still, you know, keep things moving in between larger meetings? I mean, is there any way to do that, or do really only can conduct business on, you know, these pre-planned meetings? Just wondering about that.
Yeah, I mean, you, you really can only work together during properly noticed meetings. And that, so you're, you're not able, you're not able, say, between city council meetings to to meet and continue working on these issues if the number of people who are meeting would satisfy the numbers test.
But you could if you notified the public of that meeting?
Yeah, you could hold additional meetings, but they have to be noticed, they have to be open to the public, you have to follow all of the requirements for, for a meeting.
Yeah, if there's work that you want done in between meetings by staff, you can certainly send either myself or the staff member that would be working on that, the information, so when the meeting time comes, the work is ready. If you have questions, we encourage that. It just makes things a little bit more efficient if we know the questions ahead of time, so we can get you the answer, so you don't have to, you know, table it, or, or, you know, or, or really not have all the information you need in order to take an educated vote. So, yeah, we encourage that, and we also encourage, if you want to make amendments, you can certainly work on that language ahead of time, and you can share that with, usually we, we send that to Holly, and then she can work with, with Matt if we need an attorney's opinion on amendment language. It just makes it go a lot smoother, especially virtually. You can see the challenges that occur when we're trying to do this stuff on the fly. But sometimes things do come up at the meetings, and we just address them the best we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the open meetings law? Okay.
So, a couple of things for, for you, Matt, is you, you think for the community members that are on the standing committees, we should just give them the information? Or how do you think we should approach that? Because this is new territory for us.
Yeah. Good question. You can certainly provide the written materials. If you'd like to schedule a time where I could have a Zoom meeting, for example, with just the community members of the committees, as long as each one is from a different committee, we could meet and it wouldn't be a meeting. And I could do, I could give them a presentation if you'd like to do that. So it's really what, what you think you'd like to do, I'll work.
Yeah, what we might do, we might share the recording as well, or something like that.
Yep, that, yeah, let them know that this recording is available so that they can get up to speed on the open meetings law. Yeah, and the ethics law, which is gonna be next up. Would you like to talk about that piece tonight, Mayor? Or people had enough of this tonight, we could do the ethics tonight, we could do it another time? Probably take about ten minutes or so.
What's the pleasure of the council?
If we're pointing committee members to this recording, I think it would be best to have them together.
I agree.
Just do it like pulling a tooth.
Just get it over with, okay?
All right.
All right, we'll, we'll move into the ethics discussion. So there are several sources of law that we need to look to in the city of Stoughton that relate to the, the ethical standards that apply to local officials. We have section 2.2 of the city's code of ordinances. We also have section 19.59 of the Wisconsin statutes and section 946.13 of the Wisconsin statutes. That last one is a criminal statute. The, the, the first rule that I'm going to talk about is the basic requirement that public officials may not use their offices to obtain anything of substantial value for the private benefit of themselves, or their immediate family, or organizations with which they are associated. The, the issue that tends to, that people tend to have the most questions about have to do with organizations. So people who are either employee, an employee of a company, or maybe serve on a board of directors of a private nonprofit organization. And, and then the question is, is that an organization with which the individual is associated within the meaning of the law? And I'm not gonna get all the way into the weeds on that tonight because the rules are fairly complex. But if you find yourself in that position where you, you, either a company that you work for or a nonprofit organization that you're on the board, if, if it has businesses coming before the council, be aware that you, you, you will need to check into whether or not you have a conflict of interest in voting on that matter. And we'll talk a little later about how you can get help on that. I have a, I'll mention a, a note in here that this rule can be a little tricky when when you're looking at issues that may affect not, you know, a whole class of similarly situated people. So the example I like to use is, let's say there's a special assessment decision that needs to be made by the city council involving a street reconstruction project and sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement, and people are being specially assessed. And you happen to live in the same neighborhood where the project is happening, and you and your neighbors are all subject to an assessment. The decision there affects not only you as a member of the council, but everyone else on, in the neighborhood, or who's subject to the project. And as long as, you know, your interest as a local official is not significantly different from other affected individuals, then that's not a conflict of interest. Another example would be, and this, this has come up in, in some cases where, let's say there's a development proposal that would have an impact on a particular neighborhood. And you, as an older person, live in that neighborhood, and you and everyone else in the neighborhood is interested in it. The fact that you live in the same neighborhood does not mean you have a conflict of interest in voting on that. Your interest, you're there to represent that neighborhood. Your interest is not substantially different from others in the neighborhood. So you are, you're, you're not conflicted out of that kind of a situation. Next, it's unlawful for a person to give or offer anything of value to an elected official if it could reasonably be expected to influence that official's vote or official action, or could reasonably be considered as a reward for any official action. If you find yourself in a position where you do have a conflict of interest, then in most cases, you can simply abstain from taking official action. And, and that will avoid the conflict. I'm hearing a feedback, anybody else getting feedback? All right. As long as it's bothering anyone else.
You're okay there.
Abstain, abstaining from taking action generally is adequate to avoid the problem. Abstaining means not only abstaining from voting, from discussing the issue. So you shouldn't participate in the discussion or the deliberation if you have a conflict. The next issue I'll talk about involves private interest in public contracts. And this is one to be careful of because it's a criminal statute. Under this statute, it's unlawful for a public official to participate in the making of a contract in his or her official capacity. to participate in the making of a contract in his or her official capacity in direct contract. If you, well, so this is where it gets tricky. Abstaining is not, abstaining is not a solution. If you have the right to vote on it, even if you abstain, if you're, if you are in a private capacity benefiting from the contract, you're in violation of the statute. So you may have to say, I can't, I can't participate in this matter because I, as an elect official, would have the right to vote on it. So I'll give you an example I came across recently where a person who was the chairperson of a library board also worked for a private construction company that had an interest potentially in bidding on building a new library for that community. And in that case, the analysis was somewhat complex. But the decision that was made ultimately was that that person, in order to avoid exposure to criminal liability, her company really needed to not, either she needed to resign as the president of the board or her company needed to not bid on the project. If you find yourself in that situation, you'll want to consult with legal counsel. Next, there's a discussion of advisory opinions in in the outline that I'm I'm reviewing here. If you have a question about an ethical situation and you're looking for guidance under the city's ordinances, you may apply to the city's ethics board for an advisory opinion. You need to make your request in writing and provide all of the material facts. And if you get such an opinion, compliance with that opinion is deemed evidence of intent to comply with the with the law. That's what, that's the way that the city's ordinance allows you to seek a formal legally binding or legally reliable ethics opinion that you can rely on. In most cases, what I've found is that people don't go that route, but will seek an advisory opinion from the city attorney. You can do that, but it doesn't have the same legal weight as an advisory opinion from the ethics committee. When, when, in the past, when the ethics board has been asked for to provide legal opinions, they have consulted with the city attorney to assist them in that process. If you request that kind of an advisory opinion from the ethics board, they may not make that opinion public unless with your consent or in a way that redacts the requester's identity to protect their privacy on that issue. Or if the requestor makes public statements that are perhaps inconsistent with the opinion, then the committee can be released. The materials should include a detailed discussion of an article written by Daniel Olson regarding ethics and conflicts of interest, if you'd like to read more about this. Let me stop. Are there any questions about ethics? Okay, hearing none. I'll I'll end that discussion. The materials that that you have available in the package include also a discussion of parliamentary procedure and also the public records law. I don't think it's really helpful for me to give you a lecture on the public records law because you all don't deal with public records much. Other than I will say, I recommend that you not use your personal email accounts or your personal cell phones to conduct city business. Use your city email account for city business because emails are public records and the city can preserve those emails on its server. We can search those if there's a request where we have to respond to so that we don't have to ask individuals to search their personal email accounts for public records. All right, unless, I think that's all I I would like to cover tonight. I don't think it would be helpful to get into the parliamentary procedure discussion tonight. Is that all right?
All right, any questions? All right, thank you, Matt. Next item on for discussion and possible action is R 67 of 2021. And this one came from the Finance Committee. All the person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. R 67, 2021, authorizing the appropriate city official to pay $550,000 to Kettle Park West developer in full satisfaction of the commercial phase MRO following the conveyance of approximately four acres of additional parkland to the city. So moved.
Answer a second.
Second.
All right, there is a motion in a second. And if if we need to go into closed session, I think Attorney Dragney will advise us. All the person Schumacher, go ahead.
All right, this was in, we had an agreement set up with Kettle Park where, with Forward Development Group about paying out this MRO once they had conveyed that that four acres of parkland. They completed that earlier on and then were asking for the remittance of that amount that was in the agreement. We had it set up originally as paid out over, I think it was 10 years or so. During the discussion or Forward Development came back and asked if if we would pay that out in in one lump. During the committee discussion, we talked about several different options in there as far as whether we would do that over, as the agreement was, over several years, whether we would do that in three payments, two payments, or or all in just one. And ultimately, the committee decided to go with just the one payment out. And that was because of what increment was available within the TIF. I think that is, that is about all I've got on that, Jamin. Did I cover that fairly well or?
Yes, you did, Brett. You have really, you know, the high points on this are that we we haven't actually issued the MRO yet. So there's a, there's not a standing amortization schedule at this point, but the the agreement does state that we'll set it up over the remaining life of the TIF. And this TIF actually ends in 2035. So we do have the option of setting up the amortization schedule for the remainder of this TIF. No interest. And KPW's request is that, you know, the money, the the fund balance is available at this point in time. So they're requesting that we we pay it all in one lump sum.
All right, and I believe there is a representative here from Forward Development Group. I think I saw Ron Henshaw on here. If you have any questions, we can certainly answer them. Are there any questions at this point?
I have a question. Jamin, has the parkland actually been conveyed to the city yet? Are we still waiting on that?
We're still waiting on that, I believe.
So we're asking to give them money before it was actually conveyed? Or we would wait until it's conveyed before they actually would see the money?
Correct. We would wait until that contingency is satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion does carry. All right, thank you. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Answer a second. And all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care, everyone.